Mr. Halm, would you lead us to the pledge?
Yes, sir. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, God, grace the Senate and the Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day and we thank you for the blessings that you've given us. Lord, we ask you to watch over us today, guide us to be with the people of Rogers County. And, Lord, we thank you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, item number five. Approved, disapproved minutes for October the fifteenth. I have read the minutes, I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Halm?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any new business?
No, sir.
Okay, item number seven, announcements. Do you have any announcements?
No, sir.
Item number eight, unfinished business. Public hearing with discussion and possible action on request of a preliminary plat, approval for I Don't Care subdivision. African I Don't Care Bar and Grill of Oklahoma. Current zoning is C5. Legal description and address are reflected in your agenda. This item has been tabled from October 7th and October 15th. Mr. Director Larry Curtis?
Yes, the applicant requested one more week of tabling. I have a meeting within this week to settle. It will be great.
Okay. You think he'll have it next week? You do? Okay, I'll make most of the table. Item number eight, for one more week. Second.
Halm?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Okay, we have nothing until item fourteen. Utility permits AT&amp;T Oklahoma, born and treashing to cross parallel county road north, 193rd East Avenue, approximately half mile to South 76th Street North, and further described as twenty-six forty feet south of northeast corner of section thirty-six, township twenty-one North Range fourteen east Rogers County. To Mr. Halm.
Commissioner Curtis, is it, or Director Curtis, I'm sorry. Is it, is this on the quarter?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Halm?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number two, Chelsea Gas Authority, board to cross county road forty-one seventy, approximately point-two-five miles of south of east four-thirty, and further described as one thousand three hundred and thirty feet south of the northeast corner, section fifteen, township twenty-two North Range sixteen east Rogers County. This is in District One.
I don't think there should be an order on this one as well.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Halm?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number fifteen, claims. What do we have, all three?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Halm?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number sixteen, blanket purchase orders.
We have number one only.
One only? Would you read those, please?
Sheriff's office to calm down MasterCard for one thousand. That's to be used with Pearl and Wilder Conserdown. District three to Lowe's for various parts supplies, five hundred. District three to Walmart for various office supplies, one hundred. District three to American Waste Control for the full and reset, the dumpster that I know of, Claymore, Tucson, one thousand three hundred and eighty. The Health Department, urgent care of Green Country, two hundred and forty dollars. District two to O'Reilly's for one thousand. That's all.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Halm?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number eighteen, payment requisition, construction fund, RCB Bank, trustee, Flint County LLC, payment number seven for Rogers County E nine-one-one facility in the amount of one hundred nine thousand six hundred and twenty-six cents. Make a motion to approve. Second.
Halm?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Agenda item number one. Update by BKL Incorporated and Flint Co. regarding courthouse and nine-one-one seminar projects. Those things are just about wrapped up, so. And Janet is out there today.
Putting consoles.
Putting consoles. Discussion, possible action number two regarding resolution twenty-fourteen dash fifty-one for Court Clerk Special Fund for OBA, donations for Court Areas Fund number one-seventy-nine and account number one for OBA two-hundred. Court Clerk.
This was to be set up for a check that the OBA had donated to the court, and we couldn't put it in our fund, so Judge Stigley asked about setting up a totally different account. So that's why I came here.
This is the one that was on last week, right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Halm?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number three, discussion, possible action regarding renewal of independent contractor agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and Rogers County for Rogers County Sheriff's Department and W Tech. Under Sheriff Sapperton.
This is just our IT contract.
IT contract?
Yeah. He handles our jail and our sheriff's office.
Okay. Do you have, most of the time the amount is on, is it a monthly?
It's a monthly fee, about forty-two hundred, forty-five hundred, I don't know the exact number.
Forty-two to forty-five hundred a month?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Halm?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay, item number four, discussion, possible action regarding to temporarily suspend the imposition and, or of, and collection of fees associated with public utilities or cable television systems. Director Curtis, this is in your department.
Aye, and it's over to Mr. Iskey.
Mr. Iskey.
Commissioners, there was an Attorney General's opinion that was released, I think, October tenth. It's relatively recent. And it addresses permitting fees for public utilities. Under this opinion, the way the, and the facts of the opinion is, the Attorney General has implied that counties cannot impose fees. I have not had a chance to fully digest that, whether or not the facts in that case are any different from what might face us here. I'd also like the opportunity of talking to the Attorney General about that and to discuss the further impacts, particularly things you all know about. If we don't have some regulation on permitting, if the lines are not set to a, to the lay a depth, we re-risk in regular maintenance pulling them out, having to incur legal fees and costs. So until we can establish whether or not that fully affects us, out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to recommend that you temporarily suspend collection and imposition of those fees.
Okay. Well, temporarily, it will just be until you have a chance to get all the details, so there's not really a time limit, it's just until.
Correct.
Further notice.
Correct.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve number four. Second.
Halm?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number five, discussion, possible action regarding contract services agreement for attorney services by, between Cornerstone Legal Services LLC by Robert E. Jean Christian and the Office of the Sheriff, County of Rogers, St. Oklahoma. This is the item that, under Sheriff Sapperton, pointed on the agenda. Mr. Sapperton?
Yes, sir. We would just like to respect the request that we be allowed outside legal until this political environment changes. Mr. Christensen's been DA for fifteen years in Grady County. He was very knowledgeable as far as civil processes with assistance that we need.
Okay. Is there a price in here?
Two hundred dollars now.
Question.
Go.
John, did you check with our insurance travelers on this? You didn't? Can you check with them to make sure that by going outside with our travelers' insurance that we're not implicating the county more than what is already there? Could you do that in two weeks?
I can do that in quicker than two weeks, but yeah.
You want me to give you two, or you want to do it one?
I'll do it one.
Okay. Make a motion to table this by how John checks out with travelers' insurance about the insurability of the county with outside legal services.
Well, hang on a minute. Mr. Iskey?
Sorry.
Okay, first of all, before we could approve a contract like this, we would need to know statutory authority to do this. I guess the simple question is, is there statutory authority for the sheriff's office to go out for outside legal counsel?
Absolutely. With the Board's approval, the sheriff can have outside counsel.
Okay, so that's not a problem?
No.
If they go out for outside legal counsel, does that absolve the DA's office from responsibility, or how would that work?
No, the DA's office is still the county's statutory attorney. Doesn't change anything.
Okay, so if, and I don't know, I don't know this law firm, I'm not sure they're a fine law firm. If and when the sheriff's office is sued for whatever, are they, are they held responsible in any way, or are they free and clear?
You raise one of the couple of very important questions here. Whoever the sheriff chooses to hire, and if you bless it, there would have to be a strong review of whether or not that attorney would indemnify the county for advice that he gives that results in a judgment against the county. Yeah, I'm sure you can understand that it would be very dangerous for the county's perspective from the county's liability, that if an attorney gave an elected official advice that resulted in a judgment being brought against the county, it would seem logically unfair that the citizens of the county who would pay the judgment would have to pay a judgment for some other lawyer's advice. And then one of the ways it could be handled is that that lawyer indemnified the county. So that's one of several questions that would have to be looked at.
Would our insurance be able to answer that question for us?
It's possible Mr. LeBlanc may have some input on that. I think he would definitely want to weigh in since travelers on, no, let's remember, not every occurrence of a lawsuit brought against the county is covered by insurance.
Right.
As we unfortunately know. So Mr. LeBlanc may want to weigh in on those instances where we are covered by insurance and what extra liability travelers might be on the hook for.
John, we got a call travelers, no way around it.
Got a motion, I'll second the motion.
Delozer seconded.
Halm?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and tabled one week.
One week. Item number six, discussion, possible action regarding the equitable sharing agreement and certification for sheriff's office.
This is just a form we do every year. We did it this year, we had the wrong date on it. It keeps track of federal money that we seize and we spend. Up to this date, we've never had any, so it's been pretty easy. They're getting ready to deposit some in there and we'll have to start tracking, just like a grant or anything else.
Questions?
The only question I've got on that, if it's federal money, Teresa in here?
No, she's not here.
Would this need to also be put on our CEFA report with it being federal money? So we need to, along with that, John, we need to make sure that we track it through the county to make sure, because if it has to be on our CEFA report, we need to make sure it gets put on there.
Yeah. Any federal.
It does. Motion to approve. Second.
Halm?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number seven, discussion, possible action regarding an adjustment to the base salaries for elected officials due to increase in valuations. This is actually your first, Mr. Halm.
This is in the, under statute, the base of salaries for county is on evaluation plus population. Under our evaluation and salary, the setup by statute, the county can adjust those until it comes to the reaching point of the evaluation for the entire county. This hasn't been done, so this year was a year to do it, and I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Halm?
Aye.
Delozer?
I've got a question. This is the year we look at how much it is, or what are we talking about?
Increasing it?
How much about now?
Mr. Halm, well, go ahead. Go ahead, hold the grill.
Already said Halm, Delozer said no, so Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Would you, would you tell, Mr. Halm, what the statute, statutory adjustment would be for Rogers County?
Well, with the evaluation that we have in the population, when you have the average base salary for elected officials would be about ninety-two thousand dollars a year. We've never gone off the evaluation for that. We've never done that, or have we cut it in the past or anything? But to make our evaluation so that we can continue to support our people in increasing their budget, we make, we put the evaluation on here to increase the elected by two hundred a month so that we be able to take care of our employees at the same time.
Just for the record, when the legislators came up with this, what statutorily elected officials were supposed to be paid, they made it a shall and not a may. In other words, an unfunded mandate, if you will. The ACCO, Association of County Commissioners, actually lobbied with legislators to change that to a may. So we lobbied against the top pay for your county. Just, I just want that for the record. And we were very, and we got that done, by the way, obviously. Okay. Next item, number eight, monthly report of officers for September twenty thirteen. Make a motion to approve. Second.
Halm?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number nine, county clerk's cashbook and summary report for September twenty thirteen. Motion to approve.
Halm?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay, item number twenty, announcements regarding county's events and status updates for comments and discussion from county departments, elected officials, as follows. Nine-one-one administrator, she's out helping put in the consoles, assessor's office, building operations.
Commissioners, we'll be taking that cooling tower offline this week since it's going to be cool. We won't need it, we need to get that cleaned and kind of fresh for the wintertime, so it'll be a day we'll choose one where we're not going to be above sixty degrees and we don't need to clean it really hard. And we're going to borrow Mr. Halm's freshener. We hope so.
You can.
County clerk? Thank you, Ryan.
I don't have anything.
Court clerk?
Nothing.
District attorney?
Nothing.
Collection board?
Nothing.
Mercy management? Human resources? IT? Lady permission?
Request to go live.
Request to go last. Judicial? Let's take Vogel him right now. Issue extension?
We will be starting an A project class this week and we'll pull that on Tuesday evenings for the next six weeks, so we will have a group of ladies coming into the office after five o'clock. I have already talked to you about this. And I have notified and discussed with courthouse security as well, so they are aware.
Great. Thank you. Sheriff's office?
Nothing, sir.
Treasurer? And back to Larry. Director Curtis, what do you got for us today?
Commissioners, as you know, during, we have talked in the past about updating our website. And I definitely appreciate Brent's help in uploading this information to, to the kind of website. I'd like to present that now. It has gone live as of this morning. This is the new planning commission website.
The what?
Did they know where the lights, it's so hard to see.
Who's watching?
Thank you.
There, thank you.
On the front page where website has our mission statement as an office, then under the first link, we have information about the planning commission itself, when it was created, the duties that it holds, the composition of the commission. We also have, for the first time, I think, in history, all of our applications for our office, including our zoning application. All those items are now available to the public instantly. Our Board of Adjustment also has their information on here. What the fourth effect is, their duties are involved. Our building codes are also available online. We are in the process of working with Brent on creating an online database system where people can access their requests and inspections online. We also have information about code enforcement. We're able to contact us if they have an issue. Our ordinance book is now available online, so the public can educate themselves without having to go directly to our office. They can download every chapter from our ordinance book and have it information instantly available to them. Also, our subject regulations, floodplain information, links to FEMA, Oklahoma Water Resources, or Green Country Stormwater Alliance. All that is now available to them, links to our DAS system, where people can look to see their floodplain information along with information for zoning. We also now have a section for frequently asked questions. We are compiling a list right now. We have five of them posted with answers. That way that people, if they have a question that's commonly asked, they can go out there and look it up if they like. Also, our contract information for individuals that are in our office. This has been a fun, fun process of creating, compiling all this data from scratch, but we hope that this information provides the public with much more knowledge where they can answer a lot of questions on their own, not having to be, having to come to our office itself. They'll be happy to answer any questions if they like.
They can do it right there from the privacy of their own home.
Privacy of their own home, double the applications, mail it in. They don't have to come to our office.
Questions, gentlemen? Boy looks bad. Good job, Larry. I appreciate it. Item number twenty-two. How's the comments and response from the board members? Miss Berry?
Yes, first, I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to compliment Larry on that website. That's wonderful. It really is.
He's amazing.
That is going to really help people. No, really. I mean it. Larry or Brad, whoever did it, you know, that is, that's really good. Step forward on this. Okay, my, two questions. The first question I have is on item, let's see, four, and I'm just simply wondering if you could explain to me, because I don't understand what that even means. The public utilities or cable television systems fees. Explain how those are, what are those? I don't, I don't get it.
A while back, I don't remember just how long. We implemented a permitting fee to all of the for-profit companies like PSL, telephone companies.
I do remember that discussion.
Okay, you remember that?
Yeah, I do now, yeah.
We came into the knowledge of an AG opinion, Attorney General opinion, that said counties cannot collect fees.
From utility companies?
Or permits.
Oh.
On this type of permit.
Oh.
So we, with the advice of our attorney, we have temporarily suspended, because many of the counties in Oklahoma actually have different operating rules, such as Tulsa, it's my population.
Right.
And Tulsa, Oklahoma County can do things that no other county can do because of the population. And, I mean personally, I feel like we have some things in Rogers County that may offset this, but to be safe, we're going to temporarily suspend.
I remembered the utility part. I did not remember the, the other part, the cable television part. I didn't remember that, but I do now that, I remember the utility part. I remember all the discussion about that. My second question is this, and I'm just curious, again, this is educational.
Yes, ma'am.
I was curious, you know, when we were discussing the item about elected officers pay, and it stated that based on our population of whatever, that it would have been ninety-two thousand. How do they, how does, how is that figure arrived at? Is it based on population? Is it based on revenue? What is it based on? You happen to know?
I don't know.
Does Mr. Halm know?
My family's studied on that.
It's based on evaluation and population. They have a base, a base set price that your legislators have put together, our legislators put together. And they came in, three years ago or four, and both Danny and Kirk came in. They had a, they passed a shall, and they said you have to raise it up.
Right. But how did, how did they arrive at that number? That's what I was trying to figure out.
Evaluation, population.
Evaluation of each person, or a?
It's our evaluation of the county.
Of the property value?
The total counting, valuation versus population. It's under statute. I don't have the statute off the top of my head, and it's derived from what they can pay. Like a county our size is pretty close to Canadian County. In Canadian County, they took it, and we chose not to.
Okay, but the property, the assessment you're talking about, is property value?
It's evaluation. What is assess valuation?
Of all the property? Which would be structures and land?
Right.
Correct?
Like our port. Our port's a four billion dollar evaluation.
So all property and all, all?
And all population. Then it breaks it all, it breaks out even. And all population, then it breaks it all, it breaks out even more of a formula for it, and it's under statute. And I can't tell you off the top of my head what it is.
Okay, so that is statutory, would it be available on the Oklahoma statute?
It's on the open line.
And the name of it, do you happen to know the name of that statute?
It takes, it's just about the salary, it's about, what is it called when they pass?
Elected officials.
Net valuation.
Net valuation, thank you.
It's called net valuation?
It is based on that alone tax and the population.
Okay, thank you.
And that's why we fought against it, because we, again, it alludes to all these other questions that you were asking that allude to the past. Rogers County's unique, we're not a, we're not a plant, we're not just a planning commission area. We are a planning and zoning. There are only three in the state. Now, everybody has planning, all seventy-seven counties.
Right.
But as far as planning and zoning, there are only three. That's why some of the decisions that the Attorney General makes, they forget there's three of us out here that have gone the extra step in county government to make it where we have every lot that's within the planning commission under zoning. That way you just.
Not all counties have everything's up.
All counties have that, no, and so.
So Oklahoma, Tulsa, and you?
No, Oklahoma County's not one. Tulsa, Wagner, and Rogers County.
Are the three?
Are the three. So in that, we fought against the place where they were trying to loop all of us together under seventy-seven counties. That's why ACO took up the fight, so that we would be able to say may. Because you get in that shall, there's no leeway.
Right.
And the commissioners that were here in eighty-eight and the commissioners today have always alluded to the fact that if we give our employees a fair value on their salaries, we must also be able to do the fair value for keeping them at a good budget.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to know how they arrived at that number, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So now you're choosing to increase pay, what is that based on? You said you were trying to increase, you pay for elected officials. I was wondering what the reason was for that change?
Just like I stated before, earlier.
Okay, can you restate, sorry?
It's for, we have given raises for our people, our employees to do that. Some of our employees would make more than the elected officials. The style of that is to go in and correct the base.
Okay, I just missed it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just don't understand what you're asking.
Oh, okay, no, that's fine.
That's probably something you didn't read about, the evaluation, we could have went to ninety-two thousand dollars. Just do that out there.
Where is your base going to be at?
Fifty-two hundred a month.
Currently, we're at sixty thousand for an elected official, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Fifty, fifty-two hundred a month.
Thank you.
Or it's what it will be.
But currently?
Currently, yes.
Sixty thousand, is that correct? Thank you.
We'd like to say that if we figure it by the hour, we're getting about two eighty-nine an hour.
That's more than that.
Any other questions?
Do you think that's our pay?
Huh? Well, you know, I don't know, fans will do, yes. I don't worry too much about that. Any other questions, public comments? Okay. Item number twenty-three, payment of purchase orders from all departments.
Is that the title?
It's, well, it's called salary.
Okay.
I think the statute, the math that you're doing, that you're moving that is about maybe three or four deep into that. Maybe point seven.
Okay, so just keep going up.
Yeah, there's not that many sections.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at that.
Going to effect is the exercise for the construction. It's just one, it's just one piece.
Well, what they're saying is, if you don't want the max. I think what they're saying is that based on the formula that they allow, eighty-three thousand. But then it's not to use that figure, but it's a value that's going up.
More things over there? I hadn't been in a couple of them.
So I guess reasoning is, we're all ourselves the same. That's mine, I mean, I don't know, that's, that's not like them. I'm just assuming that's. Okay, so just the intent then to give raises to two thousand four, is that the intent? Or not making more than the minimums themselves?
Here's the statute.
They, that's what they tried to hide the stuff.
Right. Okay. Okay, so they did make it a mad.
They made it a mad.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's what he said, it was from shall to may. What is, do you know the?
Okay, thank you guys.
Can you tell the date that this was brought down, is there a date? Two thousand, is this it? Here's increase to base salary, basic salary. Yeah.
So when we went to ninety thousand people, their evaluation, I know the port's standing, that's four years ago. You know, it's in.
Okay, what is the total population?
Right now, today?
What is the total population?
What we have for.
For the last century. Eighty-nine thousand for the last century.
Three years, and you know subdivisions, you said it was all that. Probably got ninety-four grand. Or could even be more.
Okay, thank you.
Title nineteen, that's the title.
Yeah, I liked it.
That's the statute, just to go again.
Right, right, thank you. Thanks.
First familiar. First familiar, that way they might say something. I don't know, that's all I can really do, senses. Back to all the management. Most counties are well timed.
Right. Okay, so every elected official, they want to sign, the commissioner likes to sign, it's recent, the planning commission. Everybody likes to sign, correct?
Not the place.
No?
Not just elected.
Oh, oh, he's not elected.
He's a partner here.
Okay, every elected official.
Not the important either, because that's.
Let's avoid.
Mercy management.
Well, the other election, ministers should go assess. So title seven, is that right? We may have left some.
Sure.
I just feel that would be. Yes, it is, yes, thank you.
Yeah, they had a bad range.
We cannot hit strangers out of their face. There's no way.
Yeah, he said there's someone to take vacation.
I did know, because the way there was a lady in my class, she starts telling me how I stand, and she turned around, and she goes, can I just say, would you mind, would you mind the show? And she says, something, you're like, okay. It was a dynamic, that's, that's all it was. And I said, well, what is that question that you have been paying this class? Well, thank you, sweetie. Here, I'll give it to her. But anyway, I asked, I said, what was the question? I knew the second I saw what it was, it's a dynamic, that's all it's worth. And also, I have, I have a friend, so she thinks she's got some, give it back. I gave, I only have a friend who works supposedly as a tutor for these twelve students. So she gives me a rest, and she told me that the twenty-two students, who was physical, and the math was over her student. Guess who they asked? And I had talked to them all, so I don't know if they thought I was kidding. Nothing's happening with them, and the other question everybody asked, which I believe in the law, so, would be, do they have to take the same exam instead of the college?
A good one is patient.
Please don't come and answer that. You mean to tell me you can graduate and not take? I was all that, but the market. Oh, yeah. It doesn't, well, it's not only that.
Tell me the other day, it was not my business.
Here's the deal.